Good to go when it hits seven.
About seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. There are a couple of us that are having some issues with the connecting to voting, so the ones that can vote with your laptops, please do, and those that can't, will just show hands. So, thank you very much. Thank you for social distancing still, and I heard today it's International Women's Day, and thank you for the four, five ladies that are in our room and the four councillors. And I listened to three mayors, one from Red Deer, one from Grand Prairie, and I can't remember where the lady was. I should have heard, listened better than that. But anyway, it's kind of neat to listen to these three ladies that are mayors of mid-sized cities. So, it's great to have you guys here, everybody here tonight, and again, welcome. And we'll start the meeting. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing done, somebody wish to move the agenda is presented? Lorna, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I thought you were putting up a pointy.
Okay, no, that's fine, thank you. Lorna moves this. Any discussion on Lorna's motion? Hearing done, we'll call the question. This was in favor. Security unanimously. Good, thank you. So I'll have to kind of look over at you.
Yes, oh.
Okay, and regular meetings of council on February 22nd. Any errors or omissions or? Okay, so George Lee moves this. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing done, I'll call the question. And the three of us are in favor, so.
Who's carried?
Carrie unanimously. Okay, moving on to correspondence. South Curl. Report. Does anybody have any comments, questions on their? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to the letter to the premier from Rocky Mountain. Sorry, sorry, City of Leffler, I think Rocky, oh, there's two there, sorry. First one's City of Leffler. Any questions on?
Are they just sending this for information?
Yeah, they say, in copies too, and includes all of the, this one was for the members of Mayors and Reeves.
Okay, moving on to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, letter to elected officials. Okay, any questions on that one?
One.
No, sorry.
Well, I, I was a little bit confused by it on my hand. I thought, oh, we're gonna be... Can you explain it to me, maybe give it in a little bit better language? Because if I end up, oh, we're gonna be down, and then the legislature give a little more, I'm, I'm just. And that's what I'm saying. Worth noting for council is, it is, they're, they are dropping the overall, the twenty percent. What they're doing is to try to boost the economy. They're gonna bulk load 2021. So our allocation for 2121 is gonna be higher. 2022 and 2023 are gonna be lower. Lower than we originally anticipated, so. I, I've done the calculations and, and we're, we're starting to put that information together for when we do the final budget, so.
Lorna. So we're okay, more or less okay this year, but next two years are gonna be way, way down?
It'll be, it'll be a substantial drop, yeah. This, this year, doing the calculation of the MSI, the federal gas tax, and the basic municipal transportation grant, our funding will align with what we received in 2020, so.
But 22 and 23?
Are gonna be lower.
I am happy to say that it's gonna support local public library boards, but at least there was one good note in there. This is, this is really quite devastating, but I guess we knew it was coming.
Yeah, and then the commitment after is to then go to the fiscal framework that they've been discussing in that list. That, that should continue on at that, at that level, that twenty percent reduction. And they had talked about it increasing as our economy picks back up.
I guess we're gonna try and tie it into the economy, I think, to another thing.
Yeah.
So it'll be a base load and then, and then the funding on top of that, depending on what happens to the economy. So I gotta read it.
Based, based on our use of MSI and our street program, we're not, we're not gonna be doing anything this year. So really, we'll be able to carry that over into the years that are last to try to, and then council at that point can just decide the level of projects we're doing with it. The majority of our MSI goes to our street program, so.
So we're okay to carry?
We can carry forward up to five years, yeah.
Okay.
That's how, that's how we did the poll, once we carried forward quite a few years.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on that one? Thank you. Moving on to West Lock County, proposed change to the A letter, tract of 067. For us, it doesn't affect us much, but you know, rural municipalities where the majority of the oil infrastructure or fuel is, it's definitely a factor to them.
Do any, I'm thinking of like towns or villages have any, like, do they have any linear stuff in there? Growing under their town, I guess?
Most is very limited. A lot of it is the pipelines for actual things like that, bringing stuff into communities.
Which is already taken into account.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, City of Calgary does have some oil and gas wells within their city limits. But like Kim says, I mostly, I would imagine, would probably be pretty slim pickings for.
So it's mainly the counties and?
Well, yeah, I mean, you might have one that was in the, you know, surrounding of a municipality of a town or a village, and then they evaluated that property in. That would be the only way, because to drill inside a town, I don't imagine it would have ever been allowed, but. Anyway, it is definitely a concern to the, to the rules for their funding, that's for sure. Any other questions on West Lock Counties? Okay, if not, we will move on to the letter from Crozna's Pass.
This, this came as two different letters, but we put them under the same heading because they were under the same title there.
Right, so this Crozna's Pass is first Minister Casey Madu, and then the second one is the Boxhalls. And it's to do with policing, changing from RCMP to provincial police force, and how they're happy with what they've got. Lorna, what?
Again, is this something we should be discussing as a, as a council, what our feelings are? I know some of us were at the releasing information session, but do we wait till they've actually made a move before we say?
Well, they're gonna have some, they're gonna have some open houses or whatever you wanna call them. Public consultation, and that's an opportunity for municipalities to, I mean, right at the moment, the, you know, the, these guys are starting to jump on the bandwagon of saying that they're happy with what they've got, and that the provincial policing potentially has a higher expense to it, especially for the communication portion that's not included. Tanya did her, a big spiel to Mayors and Reeves last Friday, and she spoke, you know, the negatives. She never spoke of any positives at all, which is kind of, you know, disappointing that, I'm sure there's gotta be some positives out there, but, but you know, she never mentioned one positive out there.
AUMAs still has to keep a report of this anyway.
Well, yeah, but she, you know, she's, she's representing the AUMA, as she's the chairperson of the Police Advisory Group, and, and there's gotta be some positives for the, you know, having your own provincial policing over the federal, but maybe there isn't.
One thing that, that takeaway from you guys out there, it seemed that the RMA and AUMA seem fairly united on that front of questioning whether, why the move to, and depending, it depends on whether council wants to make an official statement before or still wait for the RMA and AUMA to advocate. Obviously, we're involved with AUMA, so you can send the, council could have that discussion and send a letter to the province, or as we've done with a lot of things.
Did they say at the end of March was when they were releasing their first, from the Policing Committee, whatever it's called?
Yeah, their, their report, yes.
So, well, I would think that we should wait and see what that says, but I do think that maybe we need to keep it in our minds, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's, there's two factors on here too, is that, you know, the AUMA will not talk about the financial side, because they also represents anybody over 5,000, as well as the ones that are under 5,000. So the pay equity one, they're never going to talk negative about the pay, looking at pay equity one, because, you know, the City of Calgary, the, you know, there's Coldale's, Oketoks, which she represents, are never gonna, High Rivers are never gonna say, hey, we would like to pay, you know, the same amount and get nothing back from it. You know, Coldale, like I said, spends thirteen million dollars out of their budget a year policing, and that doesn't include, you know, the resource policing that they have that goes into schools. So they, the, Coldale does have the RCMP, but, but again, you know, if you wanna send a letter now, I mean, I don't imagine it'll follow on deaf ear. I think it'll go to, you know, if we send it to Casey Madu, I mean, he will put it with a list of, do you wanna wait until you get the report from AUMA?
As far as I'm concerned, I think we need to wait for the report, but that's, I was just wondering what other people thought.
No, I think, I think.
You say it from now, it's premature.
Yeah, I, I think, I really think that the government's going to just add them to the list of information that they're gonna glean for this public input, because I think if not, you know, the municipalities that have submitted one early are going to be really disappointed that, you know, their, their names aren't on the list, but. So I, I don't think timing makes much difference, other than if you wanna read the full report that the AUMA is supposed to be coming out with, but. Boxall has a bit of an in, because, you know, Margaret sits on a couple groups with the AUMA, and Jason has a bit of an input, because he's, he's RMA, and he represents RMA at the.
Yep, he's also sitting on like eighty-four RMA now.
Yeah, and so, you know, both of them have, you know, and Tanya, she's from Oketoks, which represents the south, and, and she has, I mean, her input strictly has been on the, on, with her RCMP versus provincial. She has never talked about the funding model, as AUMA, they think that this needs to be fair equity with policing. Which is, whereas RMA is gonna be the opposite, because RMA, all of them get, all rules get policing for free. Whereas anybody five thousand people are under, get it for free, and anybody that's about five thousand or up have to pay a percentage.
But that's all changing, right?
No, it's gonna stay the same.
It's gonna stay five thou, so five thousand under, we don't pay anymore?
No, we, we never have.
Well, no, we never have, but I thought we were in the future.
No, we're gonna still pay this other amount of money, but it's not based on whether you're under 5,000 or over 5,000. Everybody will pay a policing portion unless you have your own police force.
Okay.
So as an example, like, who can use as an example, like High River as an example, you know, they're over 10,000 people, they don't have their own police force, they have their RCMP in their community, but they don't have police that they're paying separately yet. They're paying a portion of it, of their RCMP, but they, they would still pay this other amount of money that we're, we're paying less than the money that they pay in.
Okay, I totally don't understand it, so I'm gonna have to come back and read it then, because I thought that it was only starting, well, I guess this.
To start, to start.
Yeah, that we're, we're paying a portion of it.
Right, we are.
We are, but I mean, as, as an example, some communities will, will only be paying, like, we'll be only paying seventy-five or twenty-five percent to the policing, but the, all that money that we are paying will go towards new policing, not the existing policing.
Okay.
So that's why the, the, the RMA will have issues with that policing formula, but the AUMA is not gonna help, because right now, the cities are paying, the larger communities are already paying.
Okay, but I think I'll go back and read.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a deduction thing, and, and again, you know, like the, the RMAs are saying, well, we hire, you know, special constables and. And peace officers and bylaw enforcement, does that not qualify? And only special constables that they hire qualifies for a reduction, and you have to pay. Again, I'm not sure whether the AUMA is going to release that portion of it, I don't know, but I'm sure the RMA will. So, but we, we can, if you want to, if you're one, prepared to, we can send a letter now, or we can wait until closer to the deadline, or? It's, I, it really hasn't opened yet, the public consultation portion, you know?
I don't know, I mean, I have my personal feelings on it, but I'm not, I don't know enough about it to really say it one way or the other. That's just me.
Yeah, and I, and I believe, you know, the, the AUMA, while I know for a fact they're going to come out with a position paper on it, matter of fact, they have come out with the information that Tanya shared for the Mayors and Reeves. They're, they're publicizing that information, and all they're gonna do is expand on that when they do the last one.
And as AUMA's information comes out, I mean, I can put together a report for council if you'd like to, if you feel strongly that you'd like to move forward with an official position to the province, so.
Okay, anything else on that? So it will come back to us, I'm sure as other municipalities write letters too, so. Okay, moving on to the Alberta Utilities Commission, AUA, AUC.
This is notification of the solar project that was submitted two weeks ago, or, sorry, I'm out to go to council. This is just the Alberta Utility Commission acknowledging that they've received the application and that they're moving forward.
So this is the one that's southwest of, whereas the one that we looked at a while ago today was south, straight south, and a little bit east. And part of the reasons why we're giving notifications to degrees is because we're in the fringe areas.
That's right, yeah.
Did they have a certain area that they have to?
Notify the neighbors, yeah.
Yep. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we will move on to the Vulcan County funding for the REC agreement. So they don't like some of the wording that we put in the REC agreement, and they would like us to rewrite it.
Based on the letter, they're just stating the terms. Again, it goes back to the, the meeting, the only change from the meeting, obviously, is that the capital funding, yeah, they're gonna hold the capital funding, so rather than just turning over capital funding lightly, they're gonna, and it's gonna come with applications that'll be approved by their three councillors that are adjacent to this REC district or participate in this REC district, so. With that, it's hard to determine from this letter what they wanna do with the agreement that we drafted. Obviously, there's some changes. So council could move forward if, if you like with requesting that the county draft an agreement and send it to you guys for, for review and approval. Yeah, administratively, I've, I've put everything in. I don't know how to change this, because I don't know about, this strictly speaks to funding, so it doesn't speak to the other terms of the agreement, so I don't, I'd have a hard time taking and just dumping these numbers into our agreement hoping that they would, that'd continue with it, so.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't they send the agreement back? Look at all filled in.
Good question.
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, no, I just, because a letter is separate than a contract.
That's right. So for council's consideration, you've still got the agreement that you guys have read over, agreed to set it to the county for review. They've responded with a letter, so the response needs to be how you would like to proceed from here, and that's why I'm suggesting have them put it in an agreement that you guys can review.
I agree with that.
So we need to make a motion to?
I think that helps.
Send now a letter?
Congratulations, yeah.
Request that the county draft a recreation agreement for council's consideration?
Good. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing done, we'll call the question. Those in favor?
Security unanimously.
Okay, security unanimously, thank you. Anything else on the correspondence that somebody wished to move the correspondence? Okay, Paul moves the correspondence. For information, any question or discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing done, we'll call the question. Those in favor?
It's Carrie unanimously.
It's Carrie unanimously, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to current business, the installation of art at the Tourism Center.
So you've all had a chance to read the report. This was something that the Tourism Committee was working on with the Community Service Manager in the years past, obviously, with COVID, weren't able to bring things together and move it forward last year, mostly because we, you know, closing the facility, not sure what, I don't know what we can do. Now, the committee, obviously, is no longer in place as well, but this is one of the initiatives that they wanted to see move forward as they were winding things up, so. The estimated cost of this art installation is thirty-seven hundred. It was put in budget last year, obviously wasn't used, it was put in the budget again for this year. And the idea is to build metal letters, similar to what you see in a lot of different cities and, and communities that, that have big tourism base. The idea is to put it from a tourism center on the map that you saw, in the green space at the bottom, in front, with the idea that people can stand on the sidewalks, stand in front of the sign, and you'll be able to get a photograph of Vulcan sign with the Star Trek emblem and the tourism center in, in the background. The sign itself will be the same logo that we use on our letterhead, with all of it made out of metal, six inches wide, thirty-six inches tall for the, for the emblem and the V, and then twenty-four inches high for the Vulcan letters themselves, all in the Star Trek font, and very similar to something like this. They're gonna put lighting in front of it so that it lights up in the evening. Public Works is gonna do the cement pad so that it's not, so we have place for people to have and keep the maintenance to a, to a minimal on it, so. This is something that was put in the budget. The reason being is it's a very visible tourism-based project, and the body's looking for council support to move forward with it, although it's in the budget, so you don't have to allocate funding to it, because it's already in the budget, but just looking for council support on it.
Did she talk about color?
Uh, she didn't mention it to me, I forgot. And not, not in the Cancun colors, of the many colors. I believe it was blue and black, the same as our emblem.
I'll take that motion.
Okay.
As, as it was written, Michelle. Council approved the installation of the proposed art installation signage of the Vulcan Tourism and Truck Center as presented.
Okay, um, the colors are?
Like the Cancun sign?
Yeah.
In pink?
Oh, that looks really great in Cancun.
Yes, no, it's.
Okay, any other discussion on Michelle's motion?
I'm just curious if, yeah, I'd like to see what the, the color of the signs are, but I'm wondering if we're gonna have a light shining against it. The, the Calgary Tower kinda comes to mind. Is it just gonna be one? Is it just gonna be one color? Cause it could be, I know what the supply building on there, lights, it can change the colors. I mean, if we could.
The color of the lighting?
Color of the lighting.
Okay.
Like if we had, maybe that's something further on down the road, like if we had, like some special occasion for, it's a red shirt convention, if it's, it's a red light shining against it, or if it's, I don't know, supporting the police or something, it's a blue light or something, just, just something for different. And we could, and the, I know the lighting that's proposed right now is just a simple ground mount LEDs, very similar to what's at the spaceship itself. I'm not sure about the cost difference to go to a, to a color-changing LED, so we'd have to look into that.
That's just something I had, but.
Yeah, for sure.
Would black absorb the light if we, like, changed it from red to green to blue? Would, would it show up against the black?
I.
I'm not sure, probably change it good. I assume some of the hue would look different, and that's not sure.
I didn't know if it should maybe be, I mean, she's looking after it.
Yeah, no, this, this is good.
Or something so that it reflect whatever color, but then it's the majority of the year, it's just a white light and the black would be.
I mean, you're only gonna see that night, I mean, you're gonna see the signage at night, but during the daytime, well, we might suddenly be taking the picture more so than at night.
And for the, for the most part, even during our tourism season, that's in between the time changes and, sorry, sometimes you have to wait till eleven, well, you all live to your, most of your lives, it's eleven o'clock at night before it gets dark, so. But we can definitely look at different options. Basically, we have X amount of dollars in the budget for it. If, as you guys know, anytime that we definitely have this conversation with them about lighting and that sort of thing, if it's, if it's feasible to do, and it's more money, they'll obviously come back to you for, for money and how we'll do it.
And if you do have changing colors, it will show on the building itself?
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And, and with council's support of moving ahead with the project, we can continue to provide council with more information on the, on the build of the, of the letters and the mounting and that sort of thing.
And once it's up, and too, we can put the white lights on it, and then I know a person that has colored lenses that we could put in front of it, and you change it to green or blue or whatever, and you can see if it's.
Are they in his garage?
No, it's in another building, it's called a CRC.
Excellent.
I used to have a key to it anyway, but you know, you could change, you could try it and say, yes, that's very effective, or no, it doesn't, like Lorna says, you know, it doesn't give you the, the color change that you anticipate. It might look great, I, I don't know. It's a good idea, it's a good question, so.
Cause they did, the, the, the changing lights are very available. We, you know, they, they did a strip in the pool where they're, they're on a dial, change colors, just as it went. just as it went empty for the facility. So the cost of that stuff has come down substantially, so we can, we could definitely look at it when they're, when they're putting things, yeah. They're going to bring the power across from the sign post that's, that's already outside there, so that will all depend on how we can put a controller in, those sort of things. And like Tom said, it might be something as simple as putting a lens in as well.
Okay. Anything else on this one, on Michelle's motion to go ahead with the installation? Okay, hearing that, I'll call a question. Those in favor? Three in favor and the rest are good electronic.
Kerry unanimously.
So it's Kerry unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the pool borrowing.
So just wanted to bring to council's attention, as the brief discussion, and more looking for some guidance on, on how you'd like me to move forward. We, as, we're pretty close to substantial completion for the pool. Majority of the bills have been paid. We have a good understanding of where we're gonna be, so we need to seriously look at the, the borrowing, how, how that's gonna happen. You guys have already passed borrowing by law, you already know your value that you're, that you're borrowing for. It's just the different options that are available to council for borrow. Traditionally, we have borrowed from the Alberta Capital Finance, which is now the Alberta Government Capital Finance, and there are benefits and, and drawbacks to each one of the, the methods put forward here. The nice part with the Alberta Government financing is it's a fixed rate, and it's fixed for the entire term of the, of the loan, which is great right now because the interest rate is at two-point-five percent. As you guys know, we review our financials every year, we still have loans that we took twenty years ago that are still at eight, nine percent that we're paying. So right now is a great time for borrowing under that, but there are other options. You could probably get a lower rate for shorter terms, doing it from a local financial institution. The issue with that is the cost of all effect of not knowing what the interest rate will be twenty-five years from now, but that can be. And then one final option that hasn't had a whole bunch of discussion, I briefly talked to county administration about it, and his response was, we could bring it, if the town would like to pursue it, and we need to bring something to county council for their consideration. So, and that's the final option, asking the county to provide an interest-free loan. Their financial position may allow them to do without, loaning us two-point-five million dollars. They have done this for communities in, in the area in the past. They do, they do it for nonprofit organizations. They currently have loans out there for sea cleaning plants, curling clubs, things like that. They most recently, in two thousand nineteen, did a loan for Arwood for some infrastructure, so before their funding became available. So one of the things that ties in with that is the county to date hasn't, hasn't made a decision on a capital contribution to the, to the pool. So if they were to do an interest-free loan, the interest payment saved would obviously save us a significant amount of money and would be a, a very significant contribution to the capital replacement, so.
We would be after having an answer from that one.
A center and better.
Yeah, right, right now, we're, we're in okay financial position for, like, we don't, we don't need to do the loan right now, but we need to start the process in twenty-twenty-one to get this, get this going. So we do have time to, to make a request to the county to get out and review it.
Yeah, so go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it would certainly be wonderful if they would do it, and that could be their contribution, and I think that would please a lot of people, but I think that if we don't ask, we won't get it. So I think we could ask, in my opinion, we could ask, and if they say yes, that would be wonderful. If they say no, then I think we, one of the other two options, okay?
I agree with that. Not a convention, not a need, it does hurt to ask.
So we need a motion on that?
Yeah, just to direct administration to, to send a letter to the county requesting their consideration for an interest-free loan.
Okay, so-
I'm in enough trouble most of the time, so I'm like-
Well, it's not, not one more.
Not, not one trouble.
Did you, did you get that?
I put the motion that council directs administration to approach both counties to consider the option to provide, to provide an interest-free loan for the industrial pool.
They have to say the amount, or?
No.
Okay, so. And, and perhaps they would consider part of it, even?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, I just, did someone move that yet?
It was Lorna.
Okay, any discussion on Lorna's motion? Okay, hearing that, we'll call a question. Those in favor, and?
And it's Kerry unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the commercial development incentive application.
As council's seen this before, we, we put them in transit council when we get them, but the direction and recommendation is that you direct administration to add it to the list. Like, if you approve it, then we just add it to the list, and that way we stay in accordance to the MGA where you levy taxes in the year that they're levying. So you're, you're agreeing to add it to the list, and then you don't actually approve the relaxation of the, of the municipal tax until the mill rate has been passed. This is for business in the industrial subdivision that is in the process of being completed.
Okay.
Okay.
So were the moves that we add this one to are?
Prove some direction, go, add it to the list.
Yes. Twenty-twenty-one mill rate. Okay, any question on Lorna's motion? Any discussion? Hearing that, we'll call a question. Those in favor? And?
Kerry unanimously.
Okay, Kerry unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, First Avenue South Road maintenance.
Everybody's had a chance to read the report and through the agreement, just the background on it, the town, the county entered into the agreement when Prairie Estates was moving forward. And the reason for the turning over the maintenance to the town is to have control of that road in case we need to put infrastructure, water and sewer down the road. As Tom mentioned in the, in the meeting, water and sewer was put up, a section of the road, but done in the ditches anyway, so really we haven't moved forward with anything down that chunk of road. And in our ICF meeting, we were reviewing a, the Vulcan agreements dreamed down in the county, and it was verbally discussed that this could be brought back and, and this contract terminated, as now the county's got a bigger interest in that road. And through their area structure plan, as you are all aware, the entrance is going, one entrance is gonna come off of that road as well, so they feel that, you know, the county's gonna impact the traffic on that road as well. So when I talked to county administration about it, they just said, you know, terminate the agreement at six months' notice, have the town do the formal letter saying they'd like to terminate the contract, and the county will take it to their meeting and, and review it, and have possibly terminate that. So.
You moving it?
No. Or do I also have to?
There's hands come up.
Oh, well, I wasn't sure whether there was-
Questions or?
Questions or?
Just gonna make a motion.
Either. Okay, well, we'll take all of it, so. Any discussion, I guess, on Paul's motion?
I think it's appropriate because the Vulcan water terrors county.
And that was the discussion at the ICF meeting as well.
Okay, hearing no discussion, call the question. Those in favor?
It's Kerry unanimously.
Kerry unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to committee reports. There's two that were submitted, and one from the Mayor's Reeves, February fifth. Any questions on any of that one? Okay, and then the second one is the Marcus Foundation Draft Miss, February twenty-third. Any questions on either one of those two?
All right, just in regards to the Mayor's Reeves, I'm, I'm just curious, being as how it's Zoom meetings, are you able to get more MLAs and MPs attending those meetings? Is that what I'm interested in?
No, like, this one here, there was, there was just the, the three that, you know, attended from MP, or the two from, well, I guess the three from MPs, you know, were represented, and then Grant Hunter, Shannon Phillips were a part, but never did, Joseph Schauer had foul flip is getting in, so on that one. So, yeah, nor in the past, but then the house is sitting right now, too, so it's a little harder for them to get to it, I think, but, but yeah, and then like on this last Friday, there was, again, three MPs and just two MLAs.
I was just curious if maybe-
No.
What are the benefits would be if they, if they have easier access to it, if they get more input, but.
Well, that is, Friday's their travel day, so a lot of them are traveling, and so, but then again, like I said, it might be partly because of the, of the house is sitting, so. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, under MLA Joseph Schauer, it said, discuss the letter sent to Prime Minister Churo regarding, that was just blank. Do you remember?
No, I don't know exactly.
It just looked like part of the sense was left off.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It could have been habits or something to do with, because there was some, you know, discussion of, you know, that some of the coal falls under the federal governments. Now, I'm not sure if that was what it was on, or I'm not sure.
No, I was just curious.
Because there was, there was tons and tons of discussion on the coal, especially from Grant Hunter and, and the discussion that they had with him. But he had to leave early, so, I mean, he, he, he did his whole piece and that, but he never showed up for this last meeting. Okay, anything else on those two? If not, somebody wished to move the committee course? Miles, thank you. Any comment on Miles, discussion on Miles' motion? Hearing that, we'll call a question. Those in favor? And you guys can vote what you wish.
It's Kerry unanimously.
Thank you, Kerry unanimously. Now, moving on to council reports. Counselor Taylor.
The only one I had was a Zoom for press, and I'm curious one of that. Tell us overpaid us. In twenty-nineteen, they overpaid us by nineteen thousand and change, and in twenty-twenty by thirty-seven thousand and change. Now, if there's an objection or mistake, there's ninety days to get elected. So at this point in time, basically, we take the position as the press corps. Here's the twenty-nineteen. Sorry, tell us you're gonna have to eat that. And twenty-twenty, show us where you got the numbers from, because they could say, here, you owe us. No idea where they got it from.
So you asked them to show where they got the numbers from that they overpaid?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And if we do decide to hang back, well, they can just take it back a little bit, a little bit. Yeah, okay. That was, that was the big one for the press. And that's all that.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Okay, Paul, councilor Paul.
The only one I had was FCSS, and Milo and Carol would have both finished up the paperwork for the former board. We've got five that's now. So we're just kind of waiting to see if they like to send some reps to those two communities to sit on board. So we've got a couple of bids in for the new mop, seems to have a washer upstairs, and I don't think she's decided yet on which way to go with it. She said she got a couple of them. And there's a new benefit, it was called frontline workers benefit, and they can get up to twelve-hundred dollars per person for frontline benefits, for frontline workers, actually, so. And then the new board members, the other night, we had three of the four on board, and they seem to know their stuff. There was a lot of really good questions asked, and I think they're gonna be a real asset there. And the tourism society, I finally got all the bills paid up for that, and got three bank accounts closed out with the credit union, so now tourism society does no bank account, no nothing. I'm just working on getting the, the society dissolved through the government, so doing, trying to pay for work for that. And then a couple of, just one thing I wanted to mention, a couple meetings ago, Tony asked about the Water Commission being able to vote like online-
Yeah.
Over a means.
Yeah.
And Paul did check on it, and we'd wanna do it.
Yeah, he sent me a notice of the power works.
And in fact, if I may, we just prepared checks on going. How are you doing, everything?
Yeah, it, it just seems strange that a, you know, million-dollar corporation can buy a phone call instead of, I mean, it just seems strange.
I just got, if anybody else is going to meetings like online, and then it is, they just go off with hand vote on that, like that, so.
It, it is funny how some municipalities and some groups have different philosophies on how you can do any camera portion of it, and, or the executive sessions, or the closed sessions, and, and, you know, it's all over the map, so it's-
And I still think that an in-person meeting every once in a while should be done, should be held. We seem to get more in-person than we do online.
Well, with the numbers relaxing periodically, it should probably, hopefully, most organizations will go back to, to that philosophy, but some probably won't. I mean, I know there are some counselors that just feel that it's not, it's still not safe, and they, you know.
We were down to zero, now we're up to two, I think.
Yeah.
So, as you said, the numbers are down.
Yeah, and we don't know where those two after bar are. They could be right next door to the other twenty-five, you know, so.
That's all that counts.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions for George Lee? Hearing that, thank you. Moving on to council meetings.
I was scheduled to have an first meeting this past week, but that was canceled. The only other thing of note is, we're just talking about numbers, is that people are starting to get their, their shots now, and it's, you know, I'd be premature to say, but there seems to be a bit more optimism in the, in the air. I know our local real estate market is seeing optimism in the air. There seems to be more stuff holding on around, so you see positives in the economy.
Okay, any questions for Larry? Hearing that, thank you. Moving on to council panelists.
Excuse me, I had a library board meeting. The library is now open as of today with a fifteen percent occupancy. We're having our AGM next month, and we are looking for a couple of new board members. We have one lady who is going to be resigning, so we're looking for, for a couple more people. The minister's award came in the mail, and the county approved our funding request, and we got the same amount as last year. So things are on track. So things are on track.
Anything else? Okay, any questions for Mark? Here, Dan, thank you, moving on to councillor Eddie.
Um, it's my community futures, which typically has, has been involved basically just a lot of the triple R of loans, and right now with the lady who started provincial funding and all of the, um, kind of, it almost seems changing day to day, that they're really seeing terms of local business support, provincial business support, stuff like that. And with, you know, portions being any funds that are sent out and funded through community futures, portion of those being interest-free, if they're prepaid excellent at time and stuff like that. So on one hand, there's a really, a lot of really great programs right now. On the other hand, it's the girls at community futures are really definitely working their tails off. I'm also really excited to have, our new community at large that was also present there. So she kind of introduced herself and did a bit of a Q and A around people of that. Which is great, kind of the biggest significant thing as well is going through, we did have a little bit of a staffing shuffle and did a full internal efficiency report. And from that, actually, ended up with considerable cost savings on a ministry side, which is great. Especially going to the Okatoks Art and Learning Center. And all that kind of finally falling into place and opening, and then with our previous property that's still on Okatoks. And then it's still kind of all about the budgeting and approving, going through for next year, and all the draft budgets with the ICF needs, or the, pardon, the IRC committee. And so like that, and everyone's actually the financials that go and approve and evaluate the loans and stuff like that. So that was pretty much it, ended up being just a really content-heavy meeting, but it was mostly centered around numbers and budgets and all that good stuff, so.
Okay, anything else? Any questions for Michelle?
Do you have a, a increased number of people wanting loans for startups for their businesses during this time?
Yes.
Okay.
There's been a.
And I wasn't sure if you said that, I was having trouble here, sorry.
Sorry, um, yeah, no, there is definitely a significant increase, which is great. And a lot of businesses are taking advantage of all the things that W E B is going through with economic development and trying to get that stimulation into all of the provincial partners throughout the community. So it is really exciting, and there's been a lot of really great growth and a lot of really great stimulus. And once that kind of starts and things start opening up, I think it's, it can have a lot of really exciting and positive benefits for sure. It's nice to see the kind of support come from provincial government and trying to get our economy back running and weave in our local businesses, not to pronounce.
So I don't suppose you can tell from the loans if it's in this county and town, or if it's more of the High River area?
Uh, well, actually, they do have it all broken down.
Oh, do they?
Uh, yeah.
And so we've had some economic growth over here, then?
We have, and it's funny, because Vulcan always tends to kind of be, we always have active loans when in the community, since I have been on community futures, which is really neat. And we are one of the only communities, especially the smaller ones, that have always had active and, and, applicable loans, I guess. So it's either they're applying or have already been funded, or are working with and currently being funded. So it, it's actually really neat. And then also, like, with their summer, I mean, obviously, it's a little bit different, but with their big summer camp that runs every year, Vulcan has also been kind of cool, is Vulcan is the only community that's actually had two kids go through it. So, which is kind of neat considering, I mean, that whole area, our community futures district, or community futures highway, does include a lot of the bigger centers, like Okatoks, like High River, kind of, you know. So it's, it's neat to see Vulcan have a very attractive and integral part of an organization like that.
Okay, any other questions for Michelle? Okay, here, Dan, thanks, Michelle, moving on to councillor Thomas.
With the Marcus Foundation, we had our audit, and Mark is very, very thorough. I think it drives some people slightly nuts, but he goes through it literally line by line. Takes quite a while. And anytime anybody's kind of says, oh, you can kind of skip that part, he reminds us. That's why he's getting paid, and that maybe we should listen up. I think it's, it's a great idea, I think people do have to pay attention to that. He did mention one thing regarding our, one of the motions that wasn't in the minutes. Most of us think we did pass it last year, but it wasn't in the minutes, was about the operating contingency reserve, and so this year will be the last year that that money has gone into that, so that's great. I had Vulcan Community Health and Wellness Foundation. And right now, they're in an ongoing discussion with AHS about the naming rights for the wellness center. And I think that's a bit of a slow process, or a little slower than they would like. With the fundraising that in the fall, they picked up thirty-six new donors, and we now have three monthly donors that give every month, which is really a great too. And they're still looking at ideas for grand opening, and this all depends on COVID, so we're not sure when that will be. I did partake in the Souths Grove strategic planning meeting. We did it at the county, so there are three, there were three of us there, so one from the county, one from Carmody, and myself. And how they did their strategic planning, they divided, well, you could pick what day you wanted to be, but you had a choice of three days or three evenings from six till eight or eight-thirty to sign up for. And so they split the groups up, so there were maybe twelve to fifteen on each group, which made it quite doable, because I was thinking this strategic, a strategic plan through Zoom didn't sound too good. But I think the lady that was in charge went through it, I thought, in a, a great way. She made sure that absolutely everyone had input. And if you hadn't put your hand up, she came back to you. She was, she was quite on the ball over that one. So they were asking things like, what's your best economic development opportunity that you see for your area? What's your biggest challenge? And how ready are you for it? And they did the vision and mission statement last, which is great, because so often at those kind of meetings, they start doing that, and they get tied up in the word smithing, and nothing else gets done. And so she was going to collate all the three nights together. And she said it was quite amazing how each night was quite different than the night before. So that was good to get probably more input than maybe would have in a whole big room. So that was good, and that was Dean.
Who's a facility or prayers officer?
Sorry?
What's a facility?
Oh, maybe. If you hadn't asked me, I might have been able to tell you, sorry. Oh, shoot, I can't even think of it right now. I can, I can get, um, text to that. Yes, yes, she was, she was, she was quite good.
Okay.
And I haven't got a clue about any.
Any other questions for Ronald? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to me, Kim and I met with golf course, and we had a good discussion about a two-hour meeting, and so with the executive, and they're going to put some proposals together and take it to their group and see what they can, can do, and, but it was very, very positive. Then I had a SEWA Zoom meeting, board meeting, and we had thirteen attendees. And we had applied for this fourteen million dollar grant, and it was a ten point five, and the other three point five was in other methods. But anyway, there was about two hundred applicants into this pre-screening, and we were unsuccessful. So we're having to come up with the different directions. So we have an executive meeting on Friday, so we'll try and come up with some suggestions on what we can do to move the project forward. Other than that, that was the main thing. We decided that we'd, the next board meeting, which is at the end of March, we're going to be meeting at, we had county, and had a great discussion on, you know, whether we should meet or in person or not. And something like George did said, is the majority of them wanted to meet. Unfortunately, nobody said anything about not meeting except for after, we had one that came back and said they can't meet because they can't wear a mask. And so if they had to wear a mask, they couldn't meet, so they're gonna try it. So I'm not sure how we're gonna accommodate the Zoom part, but we will try and accommodate the Zoom part with meeting that we've had county offices there. Because they, they, they still meet, their, their county has met all throughout the whole pandemic, and so. Anyway, then on the Mayors and Reeves, which was last Friday, again, it was by Zoom. We had between forty and forty-five, forty-five was the most people that were in, and forty was the average. You know, like it, after a couple of them did their presentations, you know, a couple of numbers fell off. Again, I, I think there was only two, or Joseph Scowell, I think, was the only MLA that made a report. And there was the three MPs, Martin Shields and another gentleman, and then one maybe maker's talk for that. They're finding that the biggest thing with the MLA, the MPs, is the voting is going via a text message. You have to text message in your vote, whether it's so, instead of doing a Zoom where they ask, ask all through each one, they, you, you text, you text in. So he says it's, it's new, it's, right at the moment, it feels very cumbersome, but, yeah. And that's about it. And like I said, oh, we did have a, the minister of environment, she zoomed in and gave a really nice talk, and so did the lady from Old Man Watershed. It's really quite interesting, because she always says, you know, we're non-biased, we're non-governmental, but yet, if you can't see the bias in it, there is, you know, it doesn't take much of a person to figure that one out, but if they're not biased, it's, it's, it's a non-reality, it's like, you know, so. But anyway, she, she gave a great presentation on the, on how this proposed, mining was being proposed, and how it would affect in the downstream. But it was kind of interesting too, because she had the saline concentrates coming out of the mountain streams. And, you know, I'll pick a fictitious figure, they're, let's say, point five. But by the time they hit the river, after they've gone through all the agricultural parts that put saline into the waters, you know, they're up to, you know, point two, or two point five. So the agricultural industry, from what they have, have been putting more saline into the water source than the mining have from what's been developed so far. So it was quite interesting how she kind of led to believe, is led to believe that, you know, it's the mining industry that's causing all the problems, but yet in some municipalities, it's the agriculture industry that's aiding to the problems there. I think that's pretty well it. I mean, the minister, you know, talked about all, you know, the consultations that's gonna be coming up, and, and she appreciated that, you know, everybody that, you know, sent in letters and, you know, input, and that, um, how, how they hope to still change the regulations, but it, you know, after consultation, no, no, couldn't change enough. And I believe that was it for me. Any questions or? Okay, here, Dan, somebody wish to move the verbal reports, council reports? Lyle? Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Here, Dan, I'll call the question on paper, and a few of us on paper. Okay, thank you, so it's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the administration activity group list.
So everybody sat a chance to read the, the list. We accomplished everything from the last meeting, except for obviously the public hearing and that for the land use by law amendment that will happen at the next meeting. The one thing of note is the individual water servicing agreement. We were gonna try to do one water servicing agreement with the entire county. Turns out with this industrial subdivision, it really has to be broken out into two agreements, because doing a single three-quarter inch line to a, to a farmhouse, a single dwelling in, in the county is something completely different than putting in a six-inch water line that's hooked to lawn, you know, public system, all of that. So it, through the discussion of the, the ICF committee, it was kind of, it was, felt it would probably be beneficial to do the servicing agreement as its own thing, and then the, the larger agreement for large pipeline, any, basically anything over six inch. So I finished the individual servicing agreement, because of course, that, those ones we will address the things that we've had in place for, for several years. I sent it over to the county administration for a quick review before I bring it back to council, hoping that, you know, we don't go back and forth amending a million times. So they've had it for about a week, so hopefully we'll be able to have it at the next meeting for, for council's review. And just remembering that that addresses just the individual servicing and how we forward that, so. That one's been on the books for, for a while, so I, I was quite pleased. I, I put quite a bit of time into, to getting that one together. And unless council has any other questions, we're still working on the outstanding items.
Okay, here, Dan, we'll move on to the administration report.
Again, you've all had a chance to read my report. I, again, the, the meeting that we had with golf course was, it was very beneficial, I, I feel. Like Tom said, they're gonna bring it back to their committee for further discussion. And really, it opened up the lines of communication of the, of the position of the golf course, the position of the town, so that their executives as well are aware of what you guys are, are faced with on a day-to-day as well, so it's, it was a very positive meeting, I, I felt. I attended the town hall for COVID updates. Yeah, they, they're trying to keep everybody informed at least a week in advance, but we're really struggling with the communication side. They sent out a questionnaire asking us to provide questions, and they want it answered the week before they have the meeting, and then we don't get the answers to the questions until the week after. So it seems like it's almost a three-week period to try to get a question answered. And they have been changing so quickly, if you ask a question about a recreation facility and it doesn't get answered until three weeks later, it's not relevant anymore, because they've opened rec centers. So there's been quite a bit of feedback on trying to fix those timelines with that. I attended the town hall meeting for the provincial budget. I'm sure all of you have seen the highlights for that, the majority meeting on trying to stimulate the economy. The, this was being a simple affairs-based for CAO, so there was a lot of conversation around the MSI. And then the other part that dictated most of the evening's conversation was on, there's some changes to disaster recovery stuff, which very, hopefully, it doesn't affect us, but you need to be aware. If you're, one of the big ones is if you're living in a flood zone, areas like that, they're gonna be, where they're only gonna pay for disaster recovery for one, one amount. So if you just, if you get, if you get paid out for your house, and you decide to rebuild in that same flood plain, you will never get paid again, so. It, it's going to be a change. They're reassuring us that they still feel that we have the highest disaster recovery compensation of any province out there, but still trying to tighten it up a little bit. The remuneration committee met for the second time, provided most of their information. They felt that they had just taught everything, ready to put a report together for council, and will hopefully be able to do that with one, one more meeting. I renewed the contract with benchmark assessment after reappointing Ryan, that you did last meeting, through our, our professional services and our policy for purchasing and tendering. It allows administration to renew contracts, when, when obviously, with you guys pointing Ryan as the assessor, confident that he's gonna be able to continue with their contract for the next few years, so. Is able to do that. Sure that, the pool had some conversations about substantial completion and work that needed to be completed, but they're moving forward with that and. Yeah, unless there's any other questions, that's welcome, I report.
No questions? Okay, we're gonna go with officers.
Just so councilware, Nancy included, and I'm sure you all had a chance to read it, Orsk has been really good at providing us the updates for the MGA for. Sorry, for the updates that we need for the property rights tribunal and the local government board for hearing subdivision appeals, so.
Okay, any questions on Nancy's report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to public works.
In talking to Stu today, the only thing he wanted me to add is they're also, with the weather improving, they were able to get started. Putting, rearranging the rodeo grounds, so now that the equipment that's been removed, they've started on putting panels back up and so that they can have everything ready for the. Four eight show in May and he feels that there's enough material there that they'll be able to get the arena functional. For their event and it looks like right now, the way he talked today, it looked like the only thing that they need to replace and purchase new is three sixteen foot gates, so. And he's gonna contact the locals prior to that. So it shouldn't impact our, our operations there this year.
How they can help the mountain booth?
Uh, he hasn't picked it up yet, but they're, they're going to put it up and then most likely they'd anchor it down. There's a rumor that there was some trouble with the back end, so they may have thought, it may have got damaged, but.
Okay, all righty, any else on public works? Any questions, hearing none, we'll move on to community services manager report. Any questions on the media?
Lons? Some bit of an oxymoron, leisure guide. I think she's doing anything but.
Yeah.
Leisure at the moment, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to bylaw.
Tim mentioned that he's pretty excited about the snow melting and he's gonna start working on, like, on site lease.
This is kind of a trend, how the speed limits go from fifty to forty?
There's been quite a few communities lately, so Tim, of course, as you guys are aware, he's, he's received a couple complaints from various places in town about speed and when he took the signs out. He did the data logging on it and the speeds were not above the fifty, but they were above forty. So he got looking into it with other communities, I, you guys, obviously if, uh, saw that Calgary reduced all of their residential recently. They were talking about doing a website for it, but they actually just moved forward with the council resolution on it. Nanton, I believe they did it last year and there's a lot of communities looking at it right now, so Tim's doing the research on our end in case the RCMP. You know, wanna support something like that, because of course the enforcement falls within there and I believe the majority of them, they, they limit it to forty in the residential areas and that's mostly where we get the majority of our complaints is. You know, people look out the window and see a car loan buy a fifty and it seems fairly fast, so.
There are some reasons, like Carmody is only thirty.
Yeah.
It's always been thirty.
So, so Tim's looking at it from a safety standpoint.
I mean, I don't know what they're gonna do for staffs to save, you know, about our accident rate or. I mean, take a look at, there was one MBA in the town in the town of Vulcan last month in January, I guess it's coming up here, but I mean, so it's not like we have a high. Motor collision problem like the city of Calvi does, but. But remember, when they do this, there's a chance that we're not gonna get it down on Elizabeth Street or the Conamere or the five thirty-four, it's gonna stay, stay fifty or maybe it'll be higher with. Through that area, so.
And the focus of, is, is mainly residential, one that we've looked, preliminary looked at is truck routes remaining the same as well, because you still need flow of traffic through your community, so.
Well, it's kind of like, I know you looked at it, I think it was last year, and evaluating, because we brought the highways, we only have so much say.
On the highways themselves, yeah.
Yeah, and for the most part because of our major roadways, like we really have no.
Yeah, but no say on that.
Input pretty much to that, it's really only residential that we have.
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's gonna, he, he's working with the, the RCMP for feedback and then he's going to data, data log certain areas in our community so that we know. So the council can make some, you know, have a good open discussion about whether it's something you wanna pursue further.
Is there a way that we can maybe check in contact, like Nat and I, the similar dry case, see what impact it's had if they've only done it in the past year?
Yeah, that's what he's doing right now, is the research on that.
But again, you have to be careful, because like Nat who's got a, a road that was the major push for four down to forty throughout the whole community, because. It's, it's a major, I would classify it as a truck route. And they lowered it to forty, but because of the amount of residences that are longer, so that'd be like taking Main Street as an example and saying, okay, Main Street, you know, we want it to be lowered to forty, because there's too many people to speed down Main Street, because. You can travel for blocks without a stop, stop sign. But again, that was the major reason why Nat was sold on lowering the speed limit and again. I don't know, they had, how their enforcement works or not, although they, they do have a peace officer, which we don't, you know, so.
Yeah, so he, so Tim's openly started in that dialogue with the RCMP about, you know, if council were to move this direction, what would enforcement look like and do you be supportive, that sort of thing? Hopefully to bring back a very thorough review and, and information for council to, to, to review and then obviously collect more information, have a conversation.
The cost of signage, you know, changing your signs, it says all speed limits in town will be forty unless they're posted different, you know, and then so you have five or six of those signage that would have to go out.
Yeah, so.
Okay, any else on kids? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the fire managers' report. So he has two of them there, one from January, one from February. Even though they both say March eighth on the top, one just says February farther up and then one says January farther up, but the dates are the same.
Peter did apologize, they lost their templates and everything with the, the server. The county, the issue that with the county went down.
When they're, when he's talking to students, is that like adult students taking a train to be firefighters or do they have like? Younger people trained just to see if that's something that they'd be interested in, kind of like a mentor program or something like that?
Under the training, under the recruitment, I think that he was specifically talking about the members that are taking that training and calling them students and do, under that training. But they have run a program in the past where they enrolled, I believe it was sixteen, wasn't it, wasn't that the limit, Tom, years ago?
But there's issues with that.
Yeah, and I don't know if they've.
They can't let them do this and they can't let them do that, so what's the point in having them?
But they have run that program in the past.
Senior firefighter.
Okay, any other questions on Peter's reports? Okay, hearing none, somebody wished to move administration reports. Okay, Lorna? Any discussion on Lorna's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question, those on paper and electronic ones.
Carrying now, it's like.
Okay, it's carrying now, it's like, thank you, okay, moving on to, there's no closed meeting adjournment. Michelle? Any discussion on Michelle's motion, hearing none, call the question, paper. And it is carrying unanimously, I would assume.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone.